Moving on to item 6.6, our 9:30 a.m. public hearing item. Consideration of the final recommended budget for fiscal year 2122 for the County of Lake and special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors. Cao Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephen Carter and I are going to share in this presentation, and we're very excited to be here today presenting your recommended final budget. I am going to touch on some of the aspirations that were reviewed in June when we presented it to you as a recommended budget, and then Stephen will go into the details and really talk numbers and answer any of your questions about numbers and amounts. So pandemic wildfire and power outages. That seems to be the name of the game ongoing for Lake County. But despite all of the complications that those three factors bring, we're still getting the job done. And in particular, when we put a budget together, it's a huge undertaking, and we simply couldn't do it without the support of all the department heads and their key fiscal staff. So the first thing I want to do before we go any further is thank all of them because they're incredibly cooperative, very reasonable to work with, and greatly appreciated by our office. So to touch on some of the highlights that we noted in June and a few other points, things that are ongoing in the county service, I just want to give you a few updates. First of all, I'll speak to the American Rescue Plan Act. As you know, the county is receiving approximately $12.5 million through that act. We've gotten the first half of those funds received already, and the second half will come next spring. And we have a committee that's actively working on plans to spend those funds, and we look forward to coming to your board with some recommendations in October so your board can ultimately solidify that plan. It's a tremendous opportunity for Lake County. I haven't seen anything like this come to us in the many years I've been here. So it's an extraordinary time for you as supervisors to be in leadership and to really be able to make some decisions that can advance Lake County forward in some positive ways. There are a variety of ways you can use those ARPA funds. First and foremost, it's to meet the cost of pandemic response, continuing costs there, but also for infrastructure. One of the things we hope to do is move Lake County forward with broadband coverage needs. And whether or not that's going to happen under the ARPA funds or through another endeavor, because there's a lot of money coming forward for broadband, I do believe that the years are before us where that is going to happen, and we'll be able to make up much of the coverage loss we have in rural Lake County. The Roadmap Task Force, you had a wonderful report from this task force just a couple weeks ago. The pilot project that you envisioned last spring is really coming together. The location has been selected, Clear Lake Oaks. And of course, it'll be presented, funded today when you take action on your budget. Then we can get busy filling the positions that will be necessary to actually get rolling. We look forward to that coming together in spring 2022, excuse me, in early 2022. And assuming it's successful, we'd like to keep these pilot projects going in various locations throughout Lake County where there is a need. The Economic Development Task Force, to some extent, has been on hold pending the arrival of our next community development director. So much of what the Economic Development Task Force is working on is tied to the streamlining of permitting processes, the updating of our various housing and other plans, that we need that individual here and present with us to really move forward in additional ways. So we look forward to reconvening the Economic Development Task Force really soon. Your new CDD director will be on the job October 4th. The Full Circle Project, the feasibility study update. As you recall, Congressman Thompson had put forward funding for this project as an earmark for federal funds, and we're told that it is still looking good. And we expect to be able to announce to you as soon as the federal budget is approved that hopefully that project can begin moving forward. Your board had directed that we focus on staff development and training, and several things are happening there and more to come during the coming year. The CSAC Leadership Program has begun again, and we have a number of Lake County enrollees. They are participating along with their counterparts from Mendocino and a few other counties as well. It's happening in Zoom now, but we certainly hope that they can have that in-person connection soon, hopefully in early 2022. And we're also in the process of securing a trainer that can come in and really help us focus on cultural awareness training. So we should have dates for that as well. The project we refer to as the Property Swap, which is our 18th Avenue property in Clear Lake, being a part of a swap which would lead to the county taking possession of the armory here in Lakeport, is also still underway. Your board gave me authority to sign documents relative to that project, and there was an updated document which I signed this week. So it is moving forward. We don't have a date that we can project when we will take possession of the armory, but it does look like it is going to happen. The Collier Housing Project is also moving along. One of our goals would be to get this to shovel-ready status this year. And so next steps are being taken, and you'll be considering that on an agenda very soon. And then last but not least, we're meeting soon with the Elijah House Principals to talk about the possibility of purchasing Juvenile Hall so that it can be used permanently for homeless housing location and hope to come back to your board with a proposal for your consideration to make that transaction happen. So a lot going on in the county during an exciting time. And at this point, I will turn it over to Stephen Carter for the details.
Good morning again, board. I wanted to give you a few details of basically like the highlights of the adjustments made between recommended and final recommended budget. But first, I have some final numbers from 2021. The fund balance carryover or the FBA fund balance available for General Fund actually came in at just over $7 million between 2020, 2021, and 2122, which is actually quite high. That's one of the higher numbers we've seen in the past history. And the main reason for that is our continued high vacancy rate. But quite a few of our revenues came in a lot higher than expected, and our expenses or appropriations spent only increased year over year by about 1.5 million when a lot more was available. So hit by pandemic both in the expense side, but revenue side actually increased. And partially due to such a large fund balance carryover, we're recommending that 3.5 million of that carryover be placed into our General Fund General Reserve to make a new, bring it up from nine to 12.5 million. And the reason for that is the general recommendations are to have three months or 25% of your revenues or your expenses from the prior year as a reserve for just in case. And that puts us at exactly just under 25% of the 50 million appropriations that were spent last year in General Fund alone. So that's a recommendation coming a little later. Property tax, I'm going to go over a little bit of why the revenue came in higher than expected. Our property tax came in just over 1.1 million dollars higher over the prior year, which was about 4.7% increase. We normally have, you know, the CCPI where it's up to 2% increase, and then any sales and properties that have a higher base for the property tax. So we generally do see an increase, just not necessarily always a 4% increase. It's usually in between one and three, somewhere in there. And then sales tax, actually Bradley Burns came in about 1.1 million higher than we have ever seen in the county. There are many reasons for that, but it came in at 4.4 million, which our previous high was about 3.4. So that there's part of your 7 million carryover, a little over a million there. And then our props at 172 taxes, which is statewide taxes that we share in, that only went up by 182,000, which means our local area where the Bradley Burns comes in actually saw increased spending versus the whole state seeing massive increases. And then moving on to transient occupancy tax. If you include the TID, which I did in the number in the menu, in the memo, it came in at 1,980,000. Well, if you take out the TID and just include the transient occupancy tax, it was 977,000. Well, that's also the highest I've seen since at least 2002. So even when cannot die was operational. So we had a very, very high transient occupancy tax revenue as well. So quite a few funding sources came in way above any kind of numbers we've seen before. Hopefully that continues, but take that with a grain of salt as well as things level out. And then moving on to requests for positions, additional positions in final budget over recommended. Most of these positions are in the General Fund, are either absorbed or funded by non-General Fund dollars. There is one change I would like to make here. It was brought to my attention that the Roadmap Task Force, I had a misunderstanding. Instead of one code enforcement officer added to the allocation, I would like to change it to two code enforcement officers. So the resolution for the position allocation chart would need to have attachment be changed to increase Budget Unit 2603 from five code enforcement officers to six to make their total budgeted FTEs eight, and increasing the overall positions to 1,037.95. .95 a person is kind of interesting, but part-time employees. And then now, if you don't have any questions about that, I'll go into literally the nuts and bolts of the specific changes made.
I appreciate you making the statement of the added code enforcement. Thank you for taking my call and discussing that with me and making the change as quickly as you did. I think that's going to be important for the success of the Roadmap Task Force, and looking forward to it. So thank you for that.
Definitely.
Further comments? Let's go ahead and keep moving forward.
So I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, but there were 365-ish changes made. I'll go over about 300 of them. No, just kidding. So I'll go over the major changes. Actually, the first one I want to go over is in Budget Unit 1011, Board of Supervisors. Your guys' budget unit, we're requesting to increase it by 100,000 in appropriations. Now, it's a very specific reason. That's for the Community Visioning Forum Facilitation Services. So that's generated from our offices, and that's going to come out of our ongoing, not our ongoing, our one-time money out of that fund balance carryover as well.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just add to that real quick, I want to make a clarifying point because we have an RFP out for facilitation services right now. And interested bidders have asked us if we have a budget for that. The budget that Stephen is referring to is for all the costs that might be incurred for community visioning, not for a single consultant. So the consultant's costs would come out of that, but it's not all available for the consultant in the event we might have interested parties listening.
And of course, just like all budgets, it's meant to make sure to cover all expenses regarding that. And so it doesn't mean it's going to reach 100,000 for the overall expenses either.
Correct. And as the supervisors who are participating in that effort know, there are more questions than answers right now in terms of what all will be needed for this. But it's an exciting process we're putting together.
Okay, so I'm going to go, sorry.
That might take though.
I didn't hear all that, but I'll continue. So I'm going to go in budget unit order instead of fund order. So the next big change is actually Budget Unit 1072, which is cannabis fees and taxation. I'm not going to go into it quite a bit, but basically in June, there wasn't the appropriations available to make the entire 10 million available at any given point in time. The change made increased both the revenue and the appropriations to match the 10 million that we are making available. And also, and any other questions related to that, we'll go, we already had that item, so I'm not going to go too deep into it, but we did the 800,000 for 8109, the Watership Protection District. The next budget unit would be Budget Unit 1120, Non-Departmental Revenue. Here's where a big change happened, where the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as the SLRFP, state, local, there's two different names for it. We're requesting that all $12,506,226 be, this is also from our auditor controller Kathy Siderly, doesn't feel it should be in Budget Unit 1920. So what we've put in place for your approval or not is to actually transfer it into Budget Unit 1120, the appropriations as well as the revenue. Everything would be tracked via project code ARP01 and O203, depending on what the committee decides to spend the funds on. So at any point in time, we can run a report, and it gives you every single thing with those project codes and shows you where it's at. And that's why if you looked at the fund summary, General Fund exploded expense-wise between June and now. That's the biggest reason because that's $12 million in expense right there.
And quick question.
I didn't want to go further because I thought there might be questions.
Yeah, quick question. 1920, just off the top of my head, that's disaster relief? Is that where we were looking to put it originally?
That's where it is currently, disaster response and recovery.
Gotcha. Wasn't there another large item on the revenue and appropriations also, more so than just the 12 million? I thought there was one other large item that I saw in there that I changed.
Well, it's the 3.5 million for reserves.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, that was the one.
And that was actually the next one I was going to bring up. So we would move the 3.5 million from the standard budget in 1120 into Fund 151, which is our General Fund General Reserve. That's your basically untouchable unless serious, I don't want to say disaster, because we've had plenty of disasters. Basically untouchable unless budget time or something very, very bad happens.
Yeah, and having up to three months now, based on what you stated in your memo, I think is a great place for us to be, to feel comfortable.
That makes me feel a lot more comfortable if something happens. And you might have also noticed in Budget Unit 1124, Central Services, the overall appropriations increased by 100,000. What that is, is there's a brand-new account for, we have CalCards with certain managers throughout the county, and it comes into one CalCard bill. Well, where that's paid from has moved from the auditor's office to Budget Unit 1124. And what the 100,000 is, it will never actually be spent. What it is, is it's a holding cell. We call it a clearing account. And it has to have it because the original charge will show. Instead of being negative, it will show like a normal transaction. And then the departments will be charged properly. So it'll be an in and an out. Does that make sense? Okay. And the next one up would be Budget Unit 1451, Register of Voters. So originally, the recall election was not funded in any way. So that has changed. So we increased their revenue by $306,000. Yay, the reelection, the recall election is now funded. So we increased their overall appropriations by 36,000 as well. And so that actually eased some strain on the General Fund.
And depending on the results, do we have to pay that back? Just kidding.
Possibly, no. Budget Unit, moving on, Budget Unit 1904, Information Technology. They're asking for a new capital asset of 150,000, which is the Content Management System. It's our website, and that would be out of an extraordinary request. So it's one-time money as well, part of that fund balance carryover. And then I don't want to get too weedsy for you. So the next one I wanted to talk about was the Roadmap Task Force itself. So Budget Unit 2201 has increases to payroll and positions, which is offset by a transfer in from Budget Unit 2603. And I'll get to Budget Unit 2603 to explain the other side. But that's why you would see certain line items increase, and it's related to that. As well as, we are funding the new PIO position as well, Public Information Officer position there. Budget Unit 2603 is next. So this is where the Roadmap Task Force, you'll see a slew of new appropriations, but you will also see a transfer in from Budget Unit 1072 to fully pay for it. Within Budget Unit 2603, there's a transfer to the Sheriff's Office to pay for those two positions. It's, right now, it's at $795,000. At mid-year, we'll take care of funding that extra code enforcement officer that was just added, and that number will rise by about $60,000. And Budget Unit 2702, between June and now, there has been four contracts that have been approved to help that department out with planning services and consultants. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is they're actually General Fund, and that was an increase of 182,000 within contracts. But that was approved previously coming from Budget Unit 1072. And then Budget Unit 3011, Road, actually increased 180,000 for FMAG Culver Number Three, 130,000 for Clayton Creek Bridge Project. And something I haven't said yet, most of the 365 transactions are just moving within themselves to reorganize to what they feel like it's going to be for the rest of the year. The next one is Budget Unit 3122, Lampton Airport. I was informed that they actually are going to receive an FAA grant, so their revenues are increasing by 32,000 and associated appropriations. That's a good sign. And then Budget Unit 4011, Public Health. They actually requested 300,000 in 6272, which is vehicles, for two medical vans. That has been added. That seems like a very good thing for the county as well.
Can I ask a question on that? Is that being transferred out or with hopes of getting some reimbursements for that? Or is that directly coming out of our funds?
Well, they are not part of General Fund. If you mean our funds as public health, federal funds, currently it's budgeted like it's coming out of their own funds. With, I believe, it's not budgeted, but with the hopes of another funding source.
Okay.
If Denise, the department head, would like to speak to that or not, is she here?
Yeah, she just unmuted.
Sorry, Stephen, I just stepped away from my computer for a second to handle something. Can you repeat that, please?
So, well, actually Bruno.
I was just asking the question if there's a chance of getting reimbursement on those vans or if we're paying it completely out of pocket from Public Health.
The vans that we want to order, the medical vans, are through a funding source allocation called PHI, Public Health Institute. They're giving us $350,000 for the project. I need to bring that to your board next week in order to get that approval. As soon as we have the approval, we have three months to spend the money. So that's why we've been waiting till the budgets were over to bring it to your board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a quick turnaround for actually purchasing a vehicle nowadays.
Oh, you're muted.
Sorry. It's a very quick turnaround, but I have been in contact with other counties who have bought them, and I have a couple of resources in the state that guarantee a under-three-month turnaround just for this project.
Sounds good. Thank you. So the next budget unit up that I'd like to talk about is Budget Unit 6022, which is the library. They've also received a new grant, an IMLS grant for $75,500. So that increased their revenue. And what the librarian asked me to budget for this is Wi-Fi hotspot devices, Chromebooks with licenses, and services for the Wi-Fi hotspots for two years. So that's something that will be good for the county. That is all of the major ones, unless you guys had specific questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? I see Cao Hutchinson also unmuted herself.
Yes, I just wanted to wrap up Stephen's presentation by recognizing and thanking Stephen. Stephen and his staff are just incredible. They, he refers to it as tying up the budget in a lovely, nice and tidy bow, and it's an enormous process. But we're at the stage now where we're ready to close up that bow and have our marching orders for the fiscal year. And so I just can't thank Stephen and his staff enough for all of what it takes to get to this day. So thank you, Stephen. Great job.
Makes me blush.
It definitely doesn't create itself. There's a lot of effort from many different people, including every single department, both department heads and their accounting staff. So definitely thankful for that collaboration to bring us the document that's up before us. I know that I've had all of my questions answered, and I appreciate those that took my questions. I had a whole lot more earlier in June. This is more of the fine-tuning of what was brought to us in June. So looking to see if there's any further comments or questions from board members. So I'll make one last comment before opening it up for the public. I recognize that we have, in my opinion, we have more money than the county has ever seen before, whether it's through funding from the federal government and state government because of COVID, whether it's from our increases that we've seen because, again, of COVID, where people were shopping locally and people were trying to purchase properties locally, trying to get out of the more urban and suburban areas. We've seen increases that we've never seen before. We also have some money, such as the cannabis tax dollars that we discussed earlier, more so than we've ever seen before. And I believe we are taking some steps that I am very proud of, of looking into the future and really trying to figure out what are those big key projects that will change and impact the foundation of what Lake County is for future investment and future economic development. However, I just want to make my comment of, without a full strategic plan, we may not be certain that we are taking the first step, that is the first true step that needs to be taken in order for the rest to be easier. And I hope that we can look into the future and continue to build on what we've been working on this year and eventually get to a strategic, five-year strategic plan so that we do have a very concrete idea of what the vision in the future of Lake County will look like. I think we are on that path, and I'm really proud that we're moving forward in that direction. So just wanted to make those final comments. And let's go ahead and open it up to the public for any comments on this item. We have phone 6205. You can please give us your full name.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. I attended the Middletown Area Town Hall meeting this past week, and an exchange happened between, during the meeting, between Sheriff Martin and Moak Simon, or exchange in the meeting. And it was about, the citizens were asking if there could be more and better notification through the emergency alert systems. And what the sheriff said was that he didn't have the money to do that. And he cited numerous examples of how he was completely unable to do anything further and told that meeting to simply not expect information. He talked about things like that he already had to pull staff from other parts in his department, that he didn't have enough people for... that he didn't have enough people for dispatch. And so to have heard that and now hear this today about how we have so much money. I recall through the year, attending your meetings, all the statements about people saying there aren't enough people for code enforcement, the sheriff saying he doesn't have staff to be able to make calls. I do not understand, and it isn't okay that there be this glaring difference between what you're presenting today and what we are hearing throughout the year in our day-to-day meetings. Something is terribly wrong. We're about to lose our Office of Emergency Services staff. I understand that's under the sheriff. The sheriff is saying he's critically understaffed. We're in fire season. Oh, my gosh. How is that going to get handled? People are talking about their neighborhoods being overrun by water trucks going to cannabis grows. We're being told that the Community Development Department doesn't have enough people, the Planning Department doesn't have enough people, the cannabis people are saying they know that Lake County has never had enough staff. Where is the emphasis on properly staffing Lake County so it can be a well-functioning community? I want to see the focus on that, and instead of a fancy visioning, could we please stick to building the foundation so that we have what it takes in all our departments to operate a successful county that has room for growth? We do not currently have that.
And so I saw that Brian Martin popped up during that conversation, but I do want to offer some words. Within this budget, we've added seven allocation positions for the Sheriff Department. I know that about a month or so ago, I forget the exact date, nine new deputies, and I believe one or two of those were correctional officers, were just sworn in. Some of them are going through the academy, and that doesn't mean 100% that they're going to come through with flying colors and be able to pass all the background and psychological tests and so on, but there's hopes that all nine of those will be able to settle into a position. There has definitely been some change since we've approved our $10,000 hiring incentive. There are further conversations being had on how to improve retention and recruiting of staff. We will continue to work on those things. And again, I believe we also increased code enforcement by two positions just this year. We are looking at those things. We are trying to bolster, and there's definitely an ebb and flow when it comes to staffing, especially unfortunately at this moment in time in our law enforcement. And I do not believe that there are many law enforcement agencies out there that can say that they're not dealing with those problems. It's a universal problem that is occurring across the nation. Even just in our police academies, it's about a quarter of the size of candidates that are entering into our police academies, meaning it's that much higher of a competition to try to get them to come to Lake County versus potentially higher-paying areas in the Bay Area or LA. So it's definitely, our task is made more difficult by the changes, and I will say, they are cultural changes in how our law enforcement is seen and perceived. I know that we are trying, again, we allocated more positions and we offered higher incentives. We are trying on our end, and I do not believe that we are done. But we do need to bolster our law enforcement and our code enforcement as they do, as you stated, create a foundational system for predictability and stability of an economic development that we're looking to get involved in. And I think we are taking those steps. It's a slow process to see the changes occur based on the steps that we've already taken. And I'll let Sheriff Martin continue on that if he wishes to speak on that.
Thank you very much. Touching on the, and I didn't have this information to share, but if I can do a quick screen share, I just want to address the issue of the notifications. As the board will remember, some time ago, our Everbridge notifications, NICSOL notifications, went probably about a year and a half ago to a credit-based system where we could no longer send out unlimited messages for free. The board allocated $25,000 to buy credits. And if I can do a share screen here, I will show you what that looks like on our dashboard. And to be able to see, just in the month of August of this year, when we had a couple fires, it put us over our limit. This red line here is our limit. So to answer those questions, we want to avoid this by sending out messages for things that are non-emergent. We do have another $10,000, but our $10,000 is probably going to get eaten up really quickly. I think in the course of about five messages that we send out, it probably goes through $10,000 worth of credits. So we're working with, I don't know if we're working, I think the state's working with Everbridge to come up with a solution that's statewide that will hopefully address that. But as far as sending out notifications, hopefully this puts it in perspective on what a single month can do to our messaging allocations. With that, the, our vacancy rates continue to be high. Over the years, I got cut out in a conversation about how many positions were added, but over the years, we've had a bunch of positions cut from the sheriff's office. At one point, I think we were a high of 186 positions. I think there was 168 when I came into office, somewhere around there. We're down to 154. And out of all those, we only have 114 employees working, which works out to about a 26% vacancy rate. So we're still playing with challenges. We've been doing what we can to try to recruit. A lot of the things that Sheriff Sabatier said as far as the desire for people to enter career in law enforcement culturally, it's not unique for us. We're not experiencing anything different than anywhere else, but we're still competing with those agencies that tend to pay a little bit more. Hopefully, some of this money will help us rectify some of that. And it's probably becoming less of an issue with our deputy sheriff positions as it is with our support and clerical staff. The Sheriff's Office and the Office of Emergency Services is probably, a minority of the work that we do is actually the patrol work and going out and responding to these calls for service. We also run a public safety answering point, which is commonly known as our 911 center. We're down to three dispatchers and two supervisors in there, so we're having to move deputy sheriffs. These are all things that I probably just go back over past year's budgets and explain the staffing issues, and they continue to exist. And we're going to be down to two. We've had one of our dispatchers announce resignation effective at the end of this month. So, yeah, we still experience high vacancy rates. We're still struggling with filling all of our positions in the accounting. During that conversation, Supervisor Simon mentioned that there was additional money available. We're still waiting to get our bill from Everbridge on this amount that we've gone over the credits, and we'll use that additional allocation that's been provided to purchase us some more credits. But as you can see, hopefully, you saw on that chart there, it doesn't take much to put us over our usage allocations. And as far as staffing, I fully agree. I can't disagree with staffing being challenged and delivering those services. I've said year after year that we're in the business of providing services, and if we don't have people, all the technology, all the tools are great, but if you don't have people to deliver those services, we can't accomplish our mission to provide services to people of Lake County. I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability at this point.
I will add one more thing about the alerts. I know that, for example, let's talk about the cash fire. The life-saving maneuvers between law enforcement and fire districts was absolutely amazing. To alert those that aren't in the vicinity, I think, is what's really costing us a lot of money because a lot of people are activating themselves to receive these messages so that they can be in the know. And I think it ends up costing us more to alert those that are not necessarily right in the path of the fire versus just activating an alert to those that are literally in the path of the fire. And I think that we have to be patient with information. If we're not in danger, if we are in danger, we will be told that we're in danger. But I think everybody wants to know everything. And I know people here in Lake County that are signed up with NAPA NICSOLs or Mendocino NICSOLs. And all those things cost money. And so I think that we need to do a better job of being responsible also with the services that are available so that we don't overuse those services just so we can feel comfortable because we have knowledge of what's happening. I think that our first responders are doing their job to ensure the safety of everybody who is in harm's way. And I think that we need to try to be patient sometimes with the information. I know it feels better when you have it, but at the same time, it's at the detriment of the funding that is available. And Supervisor Pyska?
So I just want to remind the caller also, when we were talking about our cannabis funds, that we are committing $3.25 million of the cannabis revenue this year to bolster our staff and to go into workforce development and salary. So, you know, this is a commitment that we're making, and we're working towards those goals. So I just wanted to remind the public and anybody that's watching that we just had that conversation.
And just want to make sure, since Supervisor Simon, your name was mentioned, if you wanted to make a comment?
No, you know, I appreciate Brian coming to the Middletown Area Town Hall. A lot of questions, obviously, on the NICSOL. Just as you pointed out, Supervisor Sabatier, we do have folks that are signed up, especially in the South County on NAPA. And, you know, definitely, NAPA sends out a lot of NICSOL, so people get those in this area. If there's a red flag warning, tree blocking the road, quite a few things come out on there. So, you know, I appreciated the sheriff coming down and sharing the information with how many folks do get the messages throughout the county on the incidences. But I know when we did have discussion, when it came for, in June, when we talked about it, I know the board and I know myself, I mentioned that, you know, if we need to increase that budget, they would be willing to have that conversation. The sheriff would bring that back to us, so, you know, I think that would be one thing. You know, we have probably heard that from a lot of different communities, members in each district. So it's something that our community and our constituents are looking for. So, you know, that was a conversation that was had, and I appreciate Jessica pointing out. And also Carol and Stephen pointing out that this is a budget unlike anything we've ever had. We, as a board, need to continue in our process of really looking at strengthening our workforce here in Lake County to take care of the constituents as we move forward. It's been said multiple times, we haven't had an opportunity like we have now, and the time is now for us to continue on to work as a board, to strengthen the workforce for Lake County, to give our constituents what they need. This budget is a step in that direction, and we got work to do. If we're sitting here having the same conversation next year, I definitely understand the frustration from the community, but I see us as a board moving in a positive direction with the funds that we have to make sure that we're strengthening the workforce to improve the lives over the next decade for this community, in this county.
Thank you, Supervisor. Let's go ahead and move on in public comment to Betsy Khan.
Good afternoon. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. This is Betsy Khan. I would like to say that in all of the discussions, the only thing I disagree with, and I disagree with strongly, is the sense that we do not have the money to put into providing public information. If you recall, the August 18 fire happened in the middle of the day when many people leave the city of Clear Lake and go to other locations to work, many of them the employees of the county. The insufficiency of the information system, such as not having enough money to provide NICSOL alerts, is absurd. Given that you have this funding, and I agree with all of you that, yes, you're doing everything you possibly can, please stop shortchanging the public. I hope that when we have a new Public Information Officer, and that Public Information Officer does have the qualifications to serve under the FEMA emergency service functions, that that particular individual will be able to articulate the needs for much improved public information. But right now, this is insufficient and each other. We use Facebook tremendously to each other's support, but we need you to stop looking at this like a little faucet with a drip. It's got to be information available for everybody to understand. So please take that into consideration. It's so amazingly difficult.
Thank you for your comment. Phone 6205. I believe this is a repeat.
Okay.
If it's a repeat, if you can be succinct.
Yes, this is not a repeat. On KPSC, the local community radio station, during the cash fire, there were many, many, many phone calls from people asking urgently for information. They didn't know their zone, they didn't know what to do, they didn't know what roads were closed. I'd like to tell you about one in particular call, actually two. One was from a gentleman, the father of the family. He had the family vehicle. He was somewhere else in the county doing his job, and his wife, children, and pets were in the cash fire zone, and he didn't know how to get in there to retrieve his family, and he had their only car. We can never know where people are and what they need. That is why you do need to broadcast the information widely. You cannot decide that you know ahead exactly the area that people need to know and that you've got that all covered. You don't. There was another call from a person who was a county employee, valiantly trying to not leave their post, had a home inside the cash fire area with dogs, and was putting a plea out to the public for somebody to please be able to find a way to get in to rescue her dogs when we already knew the roads were closed. We need the information, and since you have the budgeting, please. I agree with Betsy Khan. You've been leaving us out. Please include us. The Zone Haven rollout has gone in the tiniest pieces. I understand all the departments have been working on this for a year, and that you all have gotten trained, but the public hasn't even...
If we can make sure, if we can make sure to just stick to the budget, talking about Zone Haven is not part of the budget. If you just want to say we need to put more money, then we could talk about that. But we're not discussing the inside, internal workings of Zone Haven at this moment.
Well, it goes to, I hear the sheriff not being sure that he has enough money to do what he needs to do to care for the county.
And I just want to repeat what Supervisor Simon or Supervisor Pyska just mentioned. We just approved $3.2 million available to law enforcement. It doesn't state any specifics of how it should be used, and that's absolutely some funding that could be used for that. So I think that it's available if it's required to be used.
I look forward to hearing whether that's enough money.
Sure hope people do. Cao Hutchinson?
Yeah, I just think there's some confusion here. When Stephen Carter was giving the position report earlier, he mentioned a Public Information Officer. He didn't say that that position was for the Sheriff Department, but it is. It's a, it came to you earlier through their class and comp committee. So the sheriff is getting a Public Information Officer this year. He's also getting additional law enforcement positions which have already been reviewed. And we are poised to put additional funding into the cost of NICSOLs as it is needed. So that's, those are the facts relative to some of this.
All right. Thank you for that. And it looks like we have no further public comments. And so, Mr. Carter, are you done with your presentation? I believe you are, since we opened it up for public comment. Any further comments or questions from board members before we take action? And I just want to remind that that action would require the amendment of the position allocation as stated by Mr. Carter earlier. And I know there's a couple resolutions.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add, I know with the last comments, the series of comments, the, just to kind of highlight the roadmap task force involving some of the funding going to the sheriff, so I know it's been mentioned, but I also would like to highlight too that in that cannabis budget, where at one time it was 7.5% allocation, now it's, I noticed it was 30%. So the board is doing what they can to assist the sheriff with what he means. And so I just wanted to, just to highlight that as well, because a lot of other things were said. And so I just wanted to heard, and just to highlight that as well, because a lot of other things were said. So I wanted to, you know, I know it's last subject that we talked about, but it involves funding. Wanted to make sure that she knew that and heard that as well. Because I had explained that on one of my town halls where the sheriff and his department has been explaining different things about emergencies and whatnot as well. So, um, I just wanted to highlight that, so.
Thank you for that. Looking for a resolution adopting final recommended budget.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, roll call, please. And just before, before everybody, uh, votes, and I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, this does require a four-fifths vote, I believe, uh, for the final recommended budget.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And looking for a resolution to be offered for position allocation resolution for adopted budget twenty-one twenty-two with amendments as stated by Mr. Carter.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Simon. All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you all.
And I'm looking at Mr. Carter and C A O Hutchinson. I believe that completes our item for the final budget. Again, thank you for all the hard work. This is something that starts back in March and April. Uh, this is a long time coming to get all the way here. Is there one more?
Final action is to approve continuation of the informal hiring freeze for general fund departments delegating authority to the county administrative officer to waive as appropriate, and that would be my motion only.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.